Letting us know and as a council, I know that we are united in trying to figure out what we can do when we do have limited ability. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Councilmember Green.
Sorry. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I just kind of wanted to echo what Councilmember Contreras said and also, you know, the city by having this right-of-way around this parcel gives us the right to kind of put special stipulations on this developer. If we didn't have this right-of-way to abandon, it would never have to come to us. They would just build whatever and they wouldn't have to do all the extra parking spots and crosswalks and traffic mitigation and everything else that we're trying to make them do. So by them having to come before us for this, for us to vacate this parcel, it does tie their hands a little bit and makes them kind of bend to our will a little to whereas they wouldn't have to so much as before. As far as a size and a height thing, they do have that by right. I did see some diagrams of the project and there are some areas that are made below ground when you come up Ocean View Drive there. I was also very concerned with the Ocean View and Park intersection right there. If you've ever tried to turn right on Park Drive coming down Ocean View, there's this peninsula that comes out. And with all of these cars that are parked here that are going to be backing out going towards Ocean View Drive, you're going to have like another 30 residents just going past that intersection that weren't there before. There's not enough stop signs, in my opinion, around this, and I think more traffic calming measures need to be taken. And that's where my traffic engineer, Mr. Sam, is going to be super involved in this, and I hope he's going to work hand in hand with the, you know, planning commission on that. But I do want to make sure from a safety standpoint that we're slowing traffic, we're mitigating the impact for the residents as much as possible, and this is a well-lit, easily walkable area. This is, you know, when all is said and done, having a residential quiet, smaller side on one half of the development and having the active side with all of the amenities and exterior patios and fountains on the other side, I think will really mitigate the noise impact for the residents. So I appreciate you kind of separating that out for us, you know, in your early design phase. So with that said, I don't think there's too much to debate. I will go ahead and move that we accept, that we close the public hearing and that we accept staff's recommendation to vacate this seven-foot right-of-way as recommended in the staff report.
I have a question. I would like to be sure, when we talk about walkability, that the entire circle of this is a sidewalk so that the people can walk their dogs or get their morning walk or whatever, their evening walk. So because they talk about being a walkable neighborhood, so I think that that would be, you know, if it was encircled with a sidewalk, you know, I know there'd be a lot of parking around there, but sidewalk would help so for that. So looking for a second.
So Mayor, there is a sidewalk designed in front of the parking that would be around the site, so there would be a sidewalk that fully encircles the property with the proposed development.
Okay.
A second.
Deputy Mayor, a second. Okay. Seeing no further discussion, then I would ask for a roll call or a vote, please.
Our understanding is that the developer's going to rededicate this parking to the city at a later time. Isn't that right?
We will maintain the right-of-way within which they will develop the public parking.
Did everybody vote? Yeah. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. That takes us to the next thing, our two discussion items this evening. The first is an update of the implementation of a strategic plan to address homelessness. Our Assistant City Manager Amanda Lee is going to introduce the item.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Tonight, staff will present an update on our implementation of the strategic plan to address homelessness. In March 2018, the City Council identified a need to develop a strategic plan to address homelessness. In June 2018, working closely with a consultant, staff spent over a year investigating homelessness in Vista, conducting multiple community meetings and meetings with service providers, unsheltered individuals, and stakeholders, examining best practices and approaches to those at risk of and experiencing homelessness, and sharing and testing ideas that could be feasible in Vista. Throughout this effort, the City Council provided feedback and direction on inquiry and appropriate approaches and outcomes. Additionally, it was recognized through this process that communities need to work collaboratively to develop plans that promote assistance to those experiencing homelessness while also protecting all community members' health, safety, and welfare. Through that work, the strategic plan was developed and in March 2020 was adopted. In August 2020, the city entered into contracts with four various service providers, and since adoption, staff has provided two updates to the strategic plan. Since last update in September 2021, the city has continued contracting services with Exodus to provide case management services, North County Lifeline for homeless prevention services to assist with rent deposits, utilities, and other financial hurdles for those at risk of homelessness, Alliance for Regional Solutions to provide shelter beds at La Pasada and Carlsbad and Haven House in Escondido, and ElderHelp to start up and operate a home-share program. The strategic plan is a living document requiring flexibility to best meet the needs of the community. Since adoption of the strategic plan, the contracted work and our understanding of the needs of the community has evolved. The body of work to address homelessness has expanded and now includes ancillary resources, including housing navigation, motel vouchers, and a state-funded encampment resolution grant program that will supplement the programs and services currently contracted through the strategic plan. Over the last 18 months, the cumulative resources invested in the strategic plan activities has significantly increased and has tripled in size with the addition of the new state grant funds. Now, I would like to introduce Sylvia S. Lewis Daniels, our Housing Programs Manager, to provide an overview of the expanded programs and to provide an update of the work that has been done to date.
In the last six months, the work associated with addressing homelessness has significantly expanded to include supplemental housing resources. We've added housing to the strategic plan and will complete an RFQ for permanent supportive housing as well as an RFP for safe parking in the very near future. We've also added a housing navigator to the outreach conducted with Exodus, a homeless outreach vehicle for the social worker and navigator. A community update was recently held at North County Lifeline to reengage community and communicate with residents on plan activities where 12 members of the community attended. We've also aligned multiple programs working together in tandem to provide greater supportive services for our unsheltered community. An example of this is our HPP funding acting as a supplemental resource for the social worker, and that's our homeless prevention program. We knew there would be a natural alignment for some of our programs, such as the shelter beds with the social worker outreach, but now we're starting to see it in other programs as well. The utilization of these program resources are a direct result of the success of the program and the resourcefulness of the program and aligned partners. Additionally, we've added a motel voucher program as a resource for the social worker to utilize. And finally, we were awarded the grant from the State of California Business Consumer Housing Agency for Encampment Resolution based on the existing body of outreach work being completed. This grant will more than triple the capacity of our homeless services offered within the city and is a direct result of council's direction to seek additional funding resources for this work. This slide provides a high-level overview of the encampment resolution grant we just previously mentioned. It provides more details on what's included in the grant program. It will be a two-year grant, and it's a demonstration program that will be staffed through Exodus Recovery to provide outreach with the goal of housing individuals experiencing homelessness and restoring the encampment environment along the Hacienda BPO area and surrounding neighborhoods to their intended purpose of open space. The addition of two additional care managers, which are social workers, one housing navigator, and a community health worker. There will also be flex funding and rental assistance for 30 to 40 individuals, as well as the new homeless program manager for the city of Vista. This is all separate from our current existing programs. This provides more detail overview of the budget. In year one, $695,000 are going direct to homeless services, and in year two, $705,000 are going to program services. In the last six months, Exodus engaged 89 new individuals experiencing homelessness in Vista. Cumulatively, in the last 18 months of the program, there have been 289 unduplicated clients. This number is lower than what we have previously stated, as we now have a larger body of data and more consistent reporting, as well as a clearer understanding of medical language used in the previous reports versus the layman's terms interpreted by staff. The number identified on this slide represents the last two quarters of the current program year as 27% of the total population and 73% as the population encountered in previous quarters. In the last quarter, the social worker has had the additional resources of the housing navigator, as well as the county's benefit enrollment specialist to support the homeless outreach team with onsite enrollment, sometimes providing benefits in as little as 24 to 48 hours. The county's social worker program has also begun outreach at the same time, but is not working in direct tandem with the current social worker. This slide provides an overview of the unsheltered population gleaned from the data provided by the social worker outreach program. This data indicates that a majority of our unsheltered population is male, 62%, with fewer females, 37%. This slide also provides some insight into the engagement level by quarter. As represented in the chart, the number of client engagements increased by quarter and should continue to trend with an increase as engagement efforts increase. As you can see on the chart, in quarter one, there were 65 engagements, and then in the most recent quarter, we have 256 engagements for this last period. The median number of clients engaged each quarter is estimated at 125. Cumulatively, throughout the duration of the program, there have been 10 unsheltered individuals permanently housed. This slide provides some regional data collected by the Regional Task Force to address homelessness, their annual point-in-time count, which was held in February of this year. It was not conducted last year due to COVID, but annually HUD requires that each continuum of care conduct this annual count, and this is just to provide you a cumulative reflection of data. This identifies the most recent point in time, which was also notably the coldest night of the year. Our total numbers are 117, which includes 41 who are located in a shelter and 76 who are located unsheltered. The motel voucher program, we've allocated $50,000 in July 2021, utilizing our community development block grant coronavirus funding through a subcontract with Interfaith to Exodus Recovery to utilize as a resource for bridge housing until people are placed in a shelter, in a recovery facility, permanent housing, or another housing situation. A total of 28 individuals have utilized this program for 418 nights in the motel since the inception of this program, and staff has recommended to refund this program with additional CDBG-CB funds and will return to council at a later date to reallocate these funds with a required public hearing to utilize CDBG funding. We should note that they have utilized all 50,000 of these funds. In the last six months, our shelter beds have been utilized 784 nights for 18 unduplicated individuals. Cumulatively, in the last 18 months since the inception of the program, we've utilized 3,577 nights of shelter for 72 individuals. The chart indicates the bed-night utilization rate for the last fiscal year. La Pasada recorded 89% utilization rate, and Haven House recorded 56% utilization rate. And these are their published numbers for their fiscal, their last fiscal year. And it should be noted that the, these numbers don't reflect a typical year. They reflect 2021, which had several COVID restrictions, including closures and lower requirements for space due to COVID. For our program specifically, this includes our nights of shelter indicate a 65% occupancy rate over the last 18 months for the total contract time and a 43% occupancy rate for the last six months. This next slide identifies our home-share program. This is the program operated by ElderHelp of San Diego. We currently have four active listings in the city of Vista, and pictured here is one listing as you see it online. The image of the listing just gives you an idea of what an applicant would look at when they go online to review listings. We also, we do have one registered seeker from Vista who enrolled last week, and she's going through a trial period with the provider. There's also onsite outreach that's happening on a weekly basis at the Gloria McClellan Adult Activity Center. And this program should be noted that it's open to renters as well as homeowners, but matching can be difficult, and it's the final step. And it's just that last piece of work that, to get two people who will be a good fit because the goal is to make a long-term renter. There have been over 158 outreach instances since the start of that program, including 60 outreach activities conducted in the last fiscal year. And we do believe that once the program is well-known, ElderHelp is confident that they'll start to get a more significant amount of applications and enrollments. This slide provides an overview of encampment cleanup. The buses depict what 45 tons would look like if they were full. In the last six months, or 135 encampments were reported with 13.4 tons of trash removed from the BPOs. And since the inception of the program, 288 encampments were reported with 45 tons of trash removed from BPOs. So that's the images to depict those three buses full of trash. In addition, we note the encampment resolution grant will not only conduct the outreach and provide housing assistance, it will also restore the encampment site to its original state or use, intended use, so open space. Our internal work group continues to meet bimonthly to improve communication and synthesize the work within the strategic plan. We're working on continually improving our outward and inward communication. We recently included an article in the R Vista magazine, and this is one of the excerpts in that magazine was distributed to 37,000 Vista homes and businesses. And we'll continue to, as a collective group, link our programs and resources to streamline our programs. And finally, the homeless prevention program. This is the program that provides funding for individuals and families who are at risk of becoming homeless or have recently become homeless. North County Lifeline has supported this program, and they have, to date, supported 47 families, totaling 145 Vista residents, with 58,000 in funds remaining. Staff has also recommended allocating additional funding to this program and will return to council for a public hearing to utilize CDBG funds as well. The average amount distributed per family is over $3,000. It's $33,021. During the same time, our rental assistance program was in operation, and a major reason why it's been active for this long is because most families were utilizing the County of San Diego Rental Assistance Program. A total of over 1,200 households received County of San Diego funding for over $13 million in assistance. And this chart just indicates how many total households were awarded countywide. So it was a significant amount of funding, and applicants were able to receive a much larger pot of funding. So we referred everyone to the county as much as possible during that period. Our government and legislative advocacy program is our internal services. We've recently developed a concept proposal letter that's been drafted to help access and improve access for our unsheltered community to Social Security Disability Insurance, as well as to simplify the enforcement to clean up the State Water Resources Board mandated BPO areas and watershed areas. We've also applied for a newly established seat on the Regional Task Force on Homelessness Advisory Board and also recently received the $1.8 million demonstration grant award. And it should be noted that that grant was only awarded to 19 counties or cities and through the entire state of California. And this concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Do you want to take the speakers first? Okay, we'll start with Carla Feliciano, followed by Benita.
My name is Carla Feliciano. This is my first time being at this lovely council meeting. I want to thank the ladies for their contributions, for trying to set up this plan to help the homelessness for the last year and a half. And the reason I'm here is to address my community, which is the Sunrise Community, which is located on the Shadow Ridge Golf Course on Spyglass and Shadow Ridge Drive, Shadow Ridge taking it all the way to the Sycamore Drive. And we have numerous encampments near us, and of course, we're an aging community, and we're concerned for health and safety reasons. I've been a homeowner for the last 11 years, and we've noticed no decrease or help in our community so far, and we're hoping you will come to our area soon. And the encampments are on Shadow Ridge Drive behind Circle K, and as you continue down Shadow Drive going east towards Sycamore, past the Kaiser Hospital, making your way to Stater Brothers, there are encampments there. In fact, I went to the grocery store before I came here, and I saw a poor young guy picking out of the trash can as dinner. Then across from Stater Brother is Burlington. There's another encampment there with tents, and behind that is IHOP. We understand these poor people need help, and we're grateful you're implementing this plan, but we also are concerned because they're infiltrating our communities now. And in the morning, sometimes we see them picking into our trash cans left on the curb, and they're doing that, of course, in order to live, you know, sustain their lives on the sidewalk. And so I come here because I'm a member of our HOA board on the Architectural Committee, and we just were wondering what is going on and if we could just give you our input. And we thank you. You can tell I'm nervous.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate your input. She's followed by Paul Weber.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Your community, this is our community. My tax dollars pay for everyone to live wherever they want, be it in an encampment, be it out there in front of City Hall. This is our community. Where can community members find the data on what the city is doing to resolve the lack of safe shelter for the unhoused? Is there funding set aside to feed the unhoused? Where can the unhoused go to get nutritious, warm meals daily? I've noticed a trend in the city of Vista. The city of Vista has allocated money for all sorts of entertainment. Keep it up. Keep up with that same trend, and you're going to entertain yourselves into condemnation. Madam Mayor, if you care for the least of these, you're not going to make Vista the homeless capital of the world. You have those that are economically poor, but there are those that are truly poor, those that are poor in spirit, those that are devoid in integrity, those that lack compassion and empathy. These are the true indigents of the community. These are the true poor of the community. This is our community. My tax dollars pay for them to live in any encampment. I don't want to see anyone removing anyone from any encampment as long as I'm paying tax dollars here. I serve this country in the Marine Corps. There's plenty of Marines, ex-Marines, and veterans out there on the street. Do you know that business owners on Vista Way are putting blockades for a gentleman who's homeless? His name is Matthew. He's in a wheelchair. For him not to even roll down. My tax dollars pay for that sidewalk. Do you know that Ms. Pam that goes to Del Taco on Vista Way? Nobody passes by to give her a meal? Do you know their names? Do you care to know their names? Madam Mayor, do you go out there to see what's going on? Do you? Like I said, these are the true poor and indigent, those poor in spirit and lacking empathy.
Thank you. Paul Webster? Followed by Jim Ringa Buck.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm so happy that you're bringing this item up. I was very impressed with Sylvia and Amanda during the May 11th community update. I think they did a great job. One of the things that I really appreciate is this city's focus on data. We saw a lot of good data. There's a lot of good data in the report, and I would encourage the focus on data. I think what would be helpful and what I'd like to encourage the City Council to consider is a real focus on performance data instead of process data. It's great to know how many people are served. It's even better to know what the outcomes were, if those services actually resulted in additional treatment and housing placements. I know that housing placements is part of the data evaluation, but even in terms of the number of families that received assistance, an average of $3,500, what was the long-term prospects? Did any of those individuals or families come back receiving additional, asking for additional assistance? In terms of the social worker outreach, I think this is a really critical component of the strategic plan. I wanted to note that according to the Exodus report, I think it's Attachment 1 in the report, there's a whole number of responses to various types of offerings. And I just did some real quick back-of-the-napkin kind of percentages on this. The number-one most refused service was substance use. The number-two most refused service was for physical health. The number-three most refused service was for education. The number-four for employment. And the number-five most refused service was for mental health. I think those are important statistics and important metrics to understand. Another thing that I would really encourage the City Council and the city to look at is, I'm really encouraged by the Internal Homeless Working Group. I think that compiling, I'd like to encourage the city to compile data on activities and costs for city activities related to homelessness that are not identified in the strategic plan. For example, parks and recreation activities and costs, emergency services activities and costs, maintenance and public works activities and costs. What I'm talking about is things like, there are lots of externalities and lots of costs that are not specific to the parts of the strategic plan. And I think for citizens to get a much larger and more comprehensive understanding of the impacts and the costs, not just the services provided, it would be good to put some managerial categories to say things like, when a police officer or a fire department or a maintenance worker may assume that some of the costs incurred by the city are a result of... worker may assume that some of the costs incurred by the city are a result of people experiencing homelessness and camping in the community, I think that's information and data that people should know. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the staff for giving the community update a couple weeks ago. There's a lot of bad information getting blasted out on Nextdoor, so it was great to hear directly from the staff doing the work. But speaking of bad information, just last week, there was an article printed in our local news outlet about this topic and written by a local politician. Nobody here, it was Marie Waldron, who represents some of the neighboring communities, but a lot of people in our community read that paper and get their information from it. So I just wanted to point it out. The piece is filled with misleading information. I don't know how we're ever going to design a system that solves the problem if leaders are not sharing honest information with citizens. This is a complicated issue, and people are relying on leaders for correct information. For example, she's against permit of supportive housing and cites stats from San Francisco that she interprets as proof of, quote, "crime, death, and chaos." She doesn't defend the crime and chaos commentary, so my only guess is that's just there to fear monger. She does give a stat that 21% of the 515-person sample died, but she fails to mention that people are housed through coordinated entry, which prioritizes people by vulnerability. So the closer you are to dying on the streets unsheltered, the sooner you get housed, which is good, but it also means that this is a sample of people in extremely poor health. She then compares that sample of people to those serviced by the St. John's Program for Real Change in Sacramento. This is a sample of 30,000 women from over 25 years who can only be in the program if they're sober, so these are completely different groups of people who cannot honestly be compared, yet that's what's being done. She then mentions the local organization Solutions for Change, which is helping people, but they only take families with minor children, and again, requires sobriety. So again, it's a misleading comparison. So her, quote, "proven solutions" automatically eliminates the most vulnerable and high-needs population, and can only be defended as proven solutions by misleading the reader. We need serious people designing an entire system that works. Please be those serious people and take a critical look at the plan. There's a lot to celebrate. There's a lot to improve. Thank you.
Thank you. So that takes us, that's the end of our speakers. So leading it to my council. Anybody have anything? I don't see my, oh, there. Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and I want to really thank staff who worked hard to dive into the numbers that we received in the last couple of days and hours from our service providers to help us understand and clarify the numbers. We've just received this extensive edition and look forward to visiting with you extensively to better understand all that's included here. But what I want to make clear to everybody that's watching at home and all those come to be with us tonight is what a level of importance that the city of Vista does place on serving those who are the least among us, those who need help, those who are not being served right now adequately. We recognize that it's the number-one problem facing our community. We recognize the problem's getting worse, and we recognize that the solutions that have been implemented so far have, while they're, you know, we've had an all-of-the-above solution approach. We have not rejected any approach that has been brought to us. There's been no idea that's been brought to this council for how to solve or remedy this problem that we've said no to so far. So, you know, we're being as open-minded as we can. We recognize the impact on our neighborhoods. We recognize the impact on the human beings who are suffering from homelessness. The question was asked, I was in one of the encampments today in South Vista, and I am on a regular basis, and I do visit with the individuals who are living homeless on our streets. I texted for half the day today with a couple that I developed a relationship with several weeks ago. We're trying to help them find a vehicle right now so they can get off the streets. You know, I want to address this idea of the program that allows somebody, you know, that's low barrier, that allows them to be using drugs versus the one that says you have to be sober. The reality is, all these programs, what I've come to discover personally, is that they all require sobriety, because we helped some folks get into motel, which is the lowest barrier that there is. It's autonomous, you know, while they're waiting to get into Haven House. We had a couple that we put into one motel. They were kicked out in two days. They were kicked out of the second motel in three days, and they had set up residence in a tent in front of the Star Lodge here in Vista. And having known this couple personally and having worked to help them get off the street, I went over and I visited with the owner of the hotel, and I asked the owner of the hotel, I said, "Please, help me to understand why you weren't able to continue to house these people." You know, we were providing the payment through a motel voucher. And they said at 3:00 in the morning, they got in loud arguments and screamed at one another and caused such a disruption that there was no way we can continue to house them in the motel. I called Greg Angelo, who runs Interfaith, and I said, "Greg, these folks are back on the street again. Is there any way that we can get them into Haven House?" And he said, "Well," he said, "John, we've got space available," but he said, "I'm going to be honest with you." He said, "There's no way if they couldn't make it in the motel, there's no way they're going to make it in the shelter." You know, so we talk about this term called housing readiness. The truth is, you can write a rule down, you can sign it on paper, you can put it on the wall that says you're going to allow somebody who's addicted to substance, and you're going to, you know. But the reality is, if their behavior because of their mental disorder or their mental illness doesn't make them what's called housing-ready, which means that they're able to follow some basic guidelines, then they're going to continue to suffer on the streets. And I won't move forward into the next item because we're going to talk some more about that. I'm really interested in some further analysis. Some of the numbers that we've just been given and only had a couple of hours to review are significantly different from some of the numbers that we had in the last six-month report. One of those seems to be the number of unduplicated individuals that was spoken to seems to be, by my count, significantly less. Am I missing something there?
Yes, so our staff's definition of unduplicated is someone who hasn't been, is a new client to the city of Vista, whereas legal terminology, was there unduplicated if they haven't been seen in that quarter? So you could have been seen in 2021, and now in 2022, you're seen, and they considered that unduplicated. So when we kind of dove down into the numbers, we found out that there was some people being double-counted in the city's viewpoint. The numbers never changed. It was just how those numbers were being presented is what changed.
I suppose it also makes sense that in the first six months that we started counting, we were going to have a lot more unduplicated individuals to talk to than in the second six months, right? Because the population didn't all come and go, so a lot of the people were talking to the same folks that met six months ago.
Yeah, exactly. We did our 12-month review, and the numbers, we had no platform to, like, look at it previously, and now we're doing 18 months, and so we had a 12-month plus the six months, and that's where we started kind of noticing that the baseline didn't seem correct.
Well, we're certainly learning a lot through these numbers. I really appreciate some of the anonymized analogies. You know, the reason that I have been getting involved in the lives of the people who are living homeless in our neighborhoods is because the one thing that I've discovered is that the numbers tell us only part of the story. Learning the individual stories of the individuals who are living on our streets tells you a lot more, particularly helps you to understand the challenges that individuals are facing, and helps you understand the confounding and frustrating series of hurdles that seem to never end in finding real help for people. And so I appreciate that. I'm going to have a lot more questions in the days and weeks to come, but I appreciate the hard work that our staff's done on this. Thank you both for the hard work you've done and all the questions you've fielded, and I'll defer to my colleagues.
Councilmember Melendez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you to the speakers who were able to share today, and thank you, Amanda and Sylvia, for putting this presentation together and for your diligence on the strategic plan. Before I start, I wanted to share a letter that I have submitted into the public record that is the outcome of a meeting that I had with a homeless advocacy group of individuals that have lived experience with homelessness. And I want to share this letter because it's really important for me to prioritize the voices of those with lived experience. So I will read that for you now. Dear Mayor and Vista City Council, Homeless Experienced Advocacy and Leadership Network is writing to you to provide input on the strategic plan to address homelessness in Vista. As San Diego Region's Homeless Experienced Advocacy and Leadership Network, also called HEAL, we bring our firsthand experience of homelessness into critical local discourse in a meaningful and effective way. Our network is composed of seniors, veterans, parents, students, and individuals with disabilities who are eager to channel their experiences to work toward real solutions. We have firsthand knowledge and experience of housing insecurity and homelessness throughout San Diego County, including the city of Vista, and therefore recognize that this has been a major concern to the Vista community for years, and the city and stakeholders have long sought solutions to our homelessness crisis. As stakeholders and individuals with lived experience of homelessness, we deserve a voice on this pressing issue, and we ask that our voices and concerns be prioritized. The HEAL Network and Councilmember Melendez are united in our cause, and we have reviewed the strategic plan to address homelessness in order to offer you feedback on your plan. And I met with them this past Friday, by the way. I've met with them a couple of times since I've been elected and have had the opportunity to review the strategic plan, so it's been really great meeting with this group. We urge you to address homelessness with tools that are effective for resolving homelessness permanently and are best suited for recovery from homelessness. Please prioritize the following in your updated strategic plan to address homelessness. Community-based emergency housing models with individual rooms and ongoing supportive services. Inclusive shelter models for all people, including families, women, men, members of the LGBTQ+ community, and other communities of concern. Social workers and social service programs proven to successfully coordinate housing for unsheltered individuals. Social workers and social service programs proven to provide material assistance and public benefits, including but not limited to EBT or food stamps, rental and utility assistance, healthcare, and more. Finally, permanent supportive housing and other lifelong solutions that aim to house with care. We all benefit when everyone can thrive and have access to safety and security. Thank you for listening to our experiences. Sincerely, North County HEAL Network and myself, Councilmember Melendez. Thank you for allowing me to read that. And I wanted to say thank you for all your hard work, of course, because I believe that we are getting closer to some of those ideals, right? Especially looking at the data that has been provided to us, although I haven't had too much time to review it. I do see that we're showing that we've invested in social workers and social service programs that can provide those material benefits for people, and that can successfully and, you know, have a proven track record of linking people with housing. So I think that that's one of, you know, our strengths, is that we are using data to assess if this is an effective and proven strategy. But I think in the long term, a lot of individuals with lived experience want to see a greater public investment into permanent supportive housing and the lifelong solutions that are going to house people with care. I want to talk a little bit about ElderHelp and ask some questions about the programming. So I understand that ElderHelp, you know, initially when we introduced them into our strategic plan, they had to gain a network, they had to connect with potential housing providers in order for them to successfully, you know, link in an individual who needs the housing. At this point, it sounds like we have four participants in ElderHelp, but we have not yet housed anyone in the ElderHelp program. Is that correct?
No, one person is in the trial phase, so they just moved in.
We're in a trial phase. All right. One of the things I'd like to say about that is that it's very unstable for an individual to go into housing on a trial basis, and so that's a concern to me, that that's even, you know, part of the premise of ElderHelp is it is very difficult to match, right? People who have lived experience of homelessness and those who have the available housing in a cohabitative environment. So that's one criticism I do want to provide, is that by, you know, looking at ElderHelp as, you know, an option for the general public, you know, other people in the general public who are also looking for housing and that's affordable, that's cohabitate, you know, you can cohabit with someone, you can even perhaps assist them with different tasks around the house. I think that ElderHelp in general, for the general public, is a good option, but I think that there are a lot of limitations when we are thinking about continuing to utilize ElderHelp as one of our primary, you know, services that we offer to people who are experiencing homelessness. I think that there are different community-based models that don't require the administrative costs that ElderHelp does, but that still provide the housing. I see Oceanside Homeless Rescue in Oceanside. They're one of the HEAL members, and they have had a huge success story with their community-based, you know, emergency housing program that's based in single-family homes. So I think that there's a lot of creative ways we could go about offering housing to individuals, but I just, I want to express, you know, not that I think ElderHelp isn't an option, but I think that it's an option that has a lot of limitations for the population that we're trying to serve. Yeah, and I would really like to see more reliable emergency housing options for people who are experiencing homelessness. I appreciate the speaker that shared how important data about outcomes is. That's something that I think when we're looking at the data, what's more important than the actual data points is the hermeneutic or the interpretation that we're using to look at the data. So for me, when I'm looking at something like that, my kind of mark of success is, have people been able to be successfully resolved of their homelessness? Are they successfully in that treatment to resolve them of their homelessness? And many of the times, the treatment is going to be housing. So I also look forward to getting a chance to look a little bit further into the data that was provided, because, you know, it was only provided to us within the past couple hours. And there's limitations, right? Even the record-keeping of our social worker is something that takes a lot of diligence, and we also have, you know, a whole continuum of care that someone is getting served by, right? So these data points are just related to our Exodus social worker. They're not even necessarily related to all the services that an individual who is unsheltered, you know, they might be getting resources through the county, they might also be getting resources through, you know, other non-governmental organizations. So I definitely want to take a look at that a little bit further, now that it's available to me. I want to give feedback on the legislative advocacy. I think that it's great that we're advocating for easier access for SSDI. I know from my experience talking to folks who are, you know, eligible for SSDI or interested in SSDI, it's a very hard process. A lot of times, people need an advocate to help them with their SSDI application, and, you know, a lot of the county workers and social workers that are available to us, they only have so much time, right? So having a specific advocate... So having a specific advocate for SSDI is very helpful. And I also think that all the activities of the social worker, you know, compared to the point-in-time count, are indicating that it is a bigger problem than what's even visible to the everyday person who might, you know, visibly witness someone experiencing homelessness. And I know that, you know, based on just some of the new encounters, right? It's a lot of effort that our social worker is taking, right? It takes a lot of effort to manage a caseload like that. So anything we can do to expand those services, such as the Encampment Resolution Grant, is going to be very helpful because honestly, the more manageable the caseload is for the social worker, the more successful they're going to be in providing those linkages. And let's see. I really want to get away from dehumanizing language, you know, things like, you know, othering language, like those people, words like infiltrating, words like, you know, getting rid of someone, exterminationist language. I just want to say that, you know, as a public official, that that is not okay. That is something that is very harmful. And the people that are unsheltered and living in our community on the streets or in their vehicles or couch-surfing, whatever it may be, they are members of our community. And I really do want to get away from that kind of language. And I think that when we hear that kind of language, I want to speak up and say that that is not okay. So that would be kind of the end of my comments for now. Again, I really just want to prioritize the voice of individuals with lived experience that are asking for community-based models, inclusive shelter, social workers with proven success, and the lifelong solutions to house with care. So thank you all for your time. I'm interested in hearing from everyone else.
Councilmember Contreras.
I want to thank the public for coming forward and providing your testimony. I really want to thank my coworkers on staff for their continued work on our strategic plan to address homelessness. I think that the conversation has definitely changed. I think it's changing for the better. I think we still have a little bit more to go. But one thing that we know for certain is how critical our social worker is and has been and will continue to be. Because at the end of the day, we need to have human-to-human conversations. We need to be able to create trust between individuals who have a lot of trauma that they've experienced because of their situation of homelessness and even possibly prior to that. So it is extremely critical that when we have conversations about community members, that we are understanding that not everybody has had the type of opportunity, the type of space that's safe to rest. And, you know, even as someone who has a lot of resources and has a job, I just, I would encourage everybody to just attempt... I'm not even telling you to go out and try to live a night outside in Vista, but even just trying on a trial basis yourself to live in your car for one day, where you don't have the ability to connect economically to different restaurants so that you can utilize their services. There's, you know, I think a lot of times what we want to do is say, "Hey, why can't people take the help that we're giving them?" And instead, the question really should be, "What can we do to ensure that we're building trust with those who have been hurt in such a devastating way?" Because I understand that it can feel threatening to have individuals whom you may not know creating space that is not coded for housing. And this situation will continue. It will continue because we have serious issues in our society that are not being addressed. You know, one of the things that I want to point out is on reasons for homelessness. I don't think that it's shocking that the number-one reason is housing. People don't have housing. You know, one of the things that I see lacking in our governmental and legislative advocacy is that we're not advocating for healthcare for all. That's a huge mistake. We just had a huge discussion here at our state level. This is something that the City of Vista should have been pushing advocacy for healthcare for all. Because we can create different programs, we can try different things, and a lot of these strategies have big price tags. But you know what? If we were to have healthcare for everybody, that is going to make a huge impact in the population that is one most vulnerable for experiencing, to experience homelessness, and the population that is currently experiencing homelessness. Now, we know that this, the numbers before us, will continue to grow. We have wages that haven't kept up. We have a population that continues to age and a population where there are finite resources and finite income. And those issues don't work in this world that we have, where costs are rising. It's incredible. Everything is increasing, right? You can't, most people can't afford a house. Most people can't afford rent. I'm looking at $900 for ElderHelp. I think the population, I think Councilmember Melendez made a really good point that, you know, I'm really happy to hear that we have started successes. But for a population that has, that needs wraparound services and continued investment from us, from community members, we need to have more housing. We need to have healthcare for all. Housing is a human right. We must have housing. We can have $1.5 billion from the state to increase transitional housing. And then what happens when you have to transition out of housing into something permanent? Do you then transition back to a permanent place on the street? These are serious issues that I don't believe we are doing our best to understand, to have a non-ideological conversation about. But I do hope that between all our different perspectives here on council and the help of the community coming forward and providing testimony in especially speaking with those who have lived experience or are currently living this experience, I wish that when we had our strategic plan to address homelessness, any kind of meeting, that they would be the first individuals that we would be inviting to come provide testimony. And, you know, I really do hope that we move quickly into some of the recommendations. I know permanent supportive housing, we had a five-vote on that. That's really important. I'm looking forward for, you know, that RFQ. This needs to be ongoing, where we can provide permanent supportive housing, permanent housing that has support services. The other thing that we need to do quickly is overnight safe parking. That absolutely, this has taken, I think, too long.